Good evening, everyone. Um, good? Great, it's been an amazing weekend for Southern Attis. And I just wanted to speak about that a little. The Southern Conference Team traveled to Buffalo to compete for the state title. I got to watch all things. It was really nice on, um, if you can watch it on an app, it was fabulous. Unfortunately, they were victorious in that last state. They were second in the state. Um, lots of their players did really, really well. In Syracuse, the Central boys' bowling team took home a state title and a couple behind them by an average of 49 pins. Um, Tommy Chamberlain is a huge contributor to that. And then we will see the whole competition, which is just 16 pins on a total. He recorded the second highest total pin score, rolling a 1362 series and an average of 227 for the day. In the girls division, Megan Dupreev, sorry, I missed that one. Recorded that by a significant score. Uh, 28 out of 70 all Central girls division. At the New Balance Indoor Track and Field National Tournament held this weekend in Manhattan, Southern's Mary Henley plowed her personal best. Performed at 58.82, placed 19th in the girls championship lineup. The Southern girls sprint men in the U L A comprised of Sarah Galvin, Monal Detero, Detero, sorry, Annalee Spenn, and Mary Henley, who fifth place in the nationals. Let's see, we had 19 Southern high school students attending the Devon State's competition. Devon prepares emergency leaders, entrepreneurs, and marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Five of our students have stayed when I was placing them in the top 10 of their group. And Maddie, um, our B O E student rep, placed fifth overall. And all of the Southern nationals. Congrats to Maddie, Sophie Park, Emily Allman, Chloe Harmonell, and Charlotte Lewis. Quickly, in athletic sports, junior Gina Zarco won first place in the beginner freestyle competition for twirling. In theater, R P. Cox had wonderful performances at Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. Everyone loved. And this weekend is the Southern girls' big performance of In the Round with Us. So I encourage everyone to attend this. Oh, sorry, sorry, it's in here, right? And I, um, I encourage everyone to try to attend, just Thursday, Friday, or Saturday.
Thank you, Dr. Castello, for this great performance. Congratulations to all Southern athletes for your incredible records. It's very proud of them. At this time, I'd like to, um, the chair would like to ask for a motion to read a statement based on, um, board statement or the teaching statement. And a motion. For the Tennessee, second. Good comments. All those are viewers, they can apply by saying aye. Aye? All those against? Mr. Dolly? Any exceptions? Any exceptions? Mr. Fisher, do you want to go? And then you have it. Thank you. I'm going to read this even. On behalf of the board of education.
Please put the laptop down so we can see your face.
I apologize, what?
Put the laptop down so we can see.
Some of the members of the board have expressed personal opinions or authority to advance surrounding the suspension of superintendent of schools, Dr. Douglas Adams. Now, at the direction of the board of education, I make the following statements on behalf of the board. It is essential to the mission of the district to assure the safety and well-being of our students. The Board of Education relies upon the district's chief executive office, the superintendent of schools, to review all situations in which students are exposed to inappropriate conduct that may affect their educational experience, whether in academics, athletics, or extracurricular settings. Over the past several weeks, the board sought to meet with Superintendent Adams to address these matters. He was unavailable to the present, to be present for executive sessions, to be given the opportunity to explain why the board had it kept in the dark and why personnel matters were not addressed in light of the gravity of the situations. The superintendent's suspension upon certain charges issued to him were not in response to his two appeals to the commission, but rather addressed those matters that the board sought to meet with him weeks ago. During this full year, we have repeatedly asked for information necessary for board members to carry out their fiduciary duties as trustees in aerial finance, and we did not receive the information that we requested that was necessary for informed consideration and action. The Southern Central School District needs a cohesive governance, a cohesive governance team in place in the interest of all students, taxpayers, and the school community. We ask the acting superintendent, Dr. Castello, to be given everyone's full cooperation in her effort to serve the district. Thank you. Public participation, and I will read the policy to remind everyone who has not heard this at the youth meetings of what the policy states. This is policy 1230, public participation at our meetings. This is the first segment for public participation, and this one is on action items only. Each segment of public participation cannot exceed 30 minutes and shall be set aside during this first section on agenda items and later in the agenda on non-agenda items. Persons wishing to address the board will approach the podium, the podium is right here, and state their name, address, and school, community affiliation. Any group or organization wishing to address the board. Shall state the name of their organization and name of the community. Presentation should be as brief as possible, or the speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes, and we will call in three minutes so that as many people as possible can speak. Our timekeeper, our board clerk right there, will alert the president to the three-minute time and thus the total time of 30 minutes. Speakers may comment on any matter related to district business. The board will not permit a public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, malicious statements, threats of violence. We're not going to do that. Statements advocating illegal behavior or other forms of violence will not be tolerated. Persons making presentations at board meetings can address their remarks to the president and shall not direct questions or comments to board members or any district officials. The president shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on certain matters at the time to be allowed for public discussion and the completeness of the subjects being presented. The president shall have the right to discontinue any presentation which violates this policy. The first segment is regarding action items only that are being acted on today. So be sure that your comments are related to actions the board is scheduled to act upon. Please proceed.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Broken from the junior in Southern High School. The board normally acts under the community. Throughout my years as a student at Southern, I've been granted amazing educational opportunities and amazing programs which I cherish deeply. However, the current situation concerning the board with Superintendent Dr. Douglas Adams needs to be explained. From what we know, which is not much, this does not support the best interests of the community. My classmates and I are here to value the support of our schools, our community, and superintendent, who has been nothing but supportive of our learning programs, but also important leaders to supervise such high-performance schools. At the last special board of education meeting in March, Dr. Adams was suspended without receiving any public. Instead of informing the public of the issue, the public was called up for a long wait, not to mention on this board executive session, that the new acting superintendent would be put in place. And that Southern Central would pay for Dr. to gain legal fees. Southern Central is known to be an elite, highly performing district with eyes of many, including teachers and staff. Not to mention, um, sorry, um. Okay, um, Southern Central is known to be an elite, high-performing district with eyes of many, including everyone who is on the board tonight. Dr. Adams led the charge along with amazing teachers and staff. From the outside in, it seems like there's an hidden agenda. The court keys at the first to gain is costing taxpayers thousands of unnecessary dollars. Acting superintendent, Dr. Lisa Castello, claims that this transition students will be the first priority. Southern Central students always felt that they were the first priority until the last election. A consistent four-to-three divide has occurred recently on the board and may get the actions taken place for none of the best interests for the community or the students like myself. Rather, it seems that they are the best interests of the outside influences. These are the actions of the power company board, which tries to silence any discontent from community members, or in this case, from Dr. Adams. Thus, the actions of the school board over the last year are very concerning to the student body in Southern Central. You are the acting parents of the district and should act appropriately. We, the student body and community, are the children of the district, however, there's a dysfunctional household, there's a dysfunctional children. The board should not be committed to make such drastic actions without any transparency leaving the public in the dark of any issues, especially in case where it affects the students. In May, two seats are up for election. I'm positive that the community members will look favoritively at the, that want to see Southern Central thrive, not succumb to the politics and such fundamental issues, to protect and educate the whole child. The board is simply wasting time, money, and effort while harshly ripping the children apart in this manner. I'm pretty sure that every single person in this room wants our school district and community to thrive. I ask the board tonight how your actions over the past year have put kids first.
The third, thank you for your remarks, first of all. We appreciate them. And the first segment of public participation needs to be on action items only. There are five action items on this agenda. So if it's not related to the five action items, it will be in the second of public participation. If there is a line, I will read that. So if I have to add something else on the agenda, so please address your comments regarding those action items, and then we will have a public representation right after that. Number one is RFP General Counsel. Two is RFP on protect. Three is RFP forensic audit. Four is appointment with general counsel in the commission of the P O. Five, later appointment, alternate general counsel. Will you hold out, please? If you can, I would like to end those actions. Please proceed.
My name is Susan Delaney. Uh, I'm a parent of three students in this Southern school, and I'm a teacher at Southern High School. Last week, the Board of Education shocked the public by voting to suspend our superintendent of schools. It is my understanding that personnel issues due to their private nature are not appealed by the district. I understand this, and while I, like many people here, wonder about what led up to the suspension, we will never get that answer. We can only trust that things will play out as they should. Tonight, I'm here to ask the board and the public to reexamine factual events that have occurred at board meetings.
I have to interrupt. We're going to start with you in the second segment because it's not really an action item.
It is, I'm sure it is. In July 2018, the first meeting of our current board, new members requested district cell phones. At that time, the district's policy did not allow for board members to have phones paid for by the district. Fast forward to February 2019, that policy has now been changed. Board members may request the district pay for them. In late summer, after Steve Walker resigned, Dr. Joe Lloyd, the sitting principal at Spoltsburg Elementary School, was recommended to take over as assistant superintendent for human resources. At that time, Dr. Lloyd, a well-revered member of our leadership team, was voted down by the board of ed. Board members claimed it wasn't personal, but that the process of hiring Dr. Lloyd had been flawed. We are now at our third assistant superintendent for human resources since Dr. Lloyd's rejection, and please note, Mr. Sichelle will be leaving us at the end of the month. In December 2018, an RFP for a special engagement audit appeared on a special meeting agenda. In subsequent meetings, this RFP was consistently referred to as a forensic audit. On February 5th, the president of the board made a point to call out her fellow board members for calling the special audit engagement a forensic audit. She explained that although board members were using the terms interchangeably, she emphatically stated the RFP was not a forensic audit. Take a look at tonight's agenda. The Board of Education is literally voting on a forensic audit. Throughout the last few months, the board has voted to hire an additional lawyer to handle personnel matters and labor relations. They have voted for a BOSI's closer agreement for an unspecified investigation. Neither of these actions were precipitated by the special. They appeared, were voted on, and were passed, all at cost to the taxpayer. In education, the standard operating procedure is for district staff to make recommendations to the Board of Education for goods, services, and programs that would benefit students. At no time has Dr. Adams recommended any of these steps to the board of ed. Mr. Cusar, our business official, who resigned a little over a week ago, never recommended an audit. No staff member ever uttered a need for the unknown BOSI's closer. Board of ed members are not the experts. You are to oversee what is brought in front of you. This is so for a reason.
Please stand up.
Our business office makes recommendations regarding our finances. The curriculum office makes recommendations regarding what our students learn on a daily basis.
We will not, we will not allow people to continue each other's speeches. Please have a good night. Hold on a second, sorry, I don't have time to do that. Um, we need everybody to have an opportunity, so please have a good speech.
B O E members are not the experts.
I'm sorry, please, I will try to sound first.
My name is Kalina Nadiata, I'm a teacher at Southern High School in Long Island. Board members are not the experts. You are to oversee what is brought in front of you. This is done so for a reason. Our business office makes recommendations regarding our finances. The curriculum office makes recommendations regarding what our students learn on a daily basis. The technology department makes I T recommendations. This occurs so that people on the ground report off the ladder the needs of the district. Then the B O E determines if they feel the recommendation is legitimate or not, if it is worth the burden on the taxpayer. This current board has consistently voted on action items that were not recommended by district staff. Please return to form before too much damage is done. The system ensures that no one with a personal agenda has too much sway over any particular situation. If the board is a body initiating a purchase, a contract, or a program, who is the objective observer who looks at the endeavor and decides its measure? Thank you.
The eight, they are ready for the comments. We will proceed to the next segment of our agenda. The chair would like to begin our consent agenda. Our last four members of the blacklist, I'll pull out any other. 2.03. Do you have a microphone? Miss Frier? Any other items?
Um, I would say that it's probably a problem of mine because I come from several, and I think other people are.
Are you pulling all other items? Just try to pull.
Just try to pull.
I am, uh, I'm sorry, 2.01, RFP General Counsel, which I would like to make a motion. Second. This section.
Unfortunately, I like to have copies of the resolution. So I don't think you want to read them on, um, so if you want to read them, I can't, I'll pass them over.
Please, Mr. Director, for reasons capital here, and the person online to vote.
So here are 2.01. Being resolved that the Board of Education hereby directs active superintendent of schools to cause preparation, issuing of another request for proposal for general counsel to the district exclusive of specification, labor relation, and personnel. So my, my only question, um, because I love it. Part of putting this together would be why you are exiting. And I don't give respect to any firm under the rule. I mean, why are we putting this out exclusive of specification, labor relation, and personnel?
Okay, so if you recall, this, um, this has been something that we're working, keeping on. Um, since the fall, we requested that they give illustrations from the school board at every board meeting when we reviewed, um, different consultants, that the board already has contracts with. Um, we requested to check if any of the contracts were stale at the time. And actually, we received the contract that was shared with all of us, all board members. And these two particular ones, section 2.01, 2.02, happened to be stale contracts that were advised had expired. In addition, so that addresses first part, why those two today, they're expired contracts are ready for some time. Second, excluding certain services because those are current contracts. So they're, they're, we aren't in a current agreement. That is current that we should not be breaking, so it's everything else except that.
So I haven't voted terms of agreement, but the current agreement is contract for the service.
Okay, I know that this contract is, you just voted on it December 13th, and the purpose of that contract is still ongoing, so it hasn't.
I mean, I'm just thinking of going forward for the, for the general counsel. The all costs, right, now being part of that, it's still, of the board, and that's just it.
This particular one is going to exclude special education, which always had to occur. And the labor relations were something that a current general counsel did not engage in. Neither that one, which is not a matter that necessitated action.
I, well, I think that's, well, I would.
That's a good way to receive. Um, any other, yeah.
Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Who's the nicer fellow?
Yes.
Okay, now, okay, so I, I just want to know, if the contract is stale, has the contracting rolled over by the district? Is the agreement?
Use the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You want it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, so if it's a stale contract, and the, this with, if it's in coordination with a particular firm or person or whatever, can the contract be rolled over if both sides agree?
So what I was informed with when we looked into this particular first contract was that it was scaled for so long that it doesn't apply to the current situation. And I don't know that even if this, nobody could actually provide it. So it was then posted among the ones that we ended up having access to with that whole. I, I, I couldn't tell you because we weren't bringing to the actual goal of the contract. Okay, at this point, it seems to no further deception, although the figures is higher than the eye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Nay, who's the name, the darling? Mr. Curran? Mrs. Frier? Any exceptions? Okay, when I was in motion file two, the chair and I might have made a motion to adopt 2.02, RFP on protect. Same circumstances, stale contract.
Um, so, just for that. Okay, so.
Motion on the board for you. Anyone? Mr. Fisher, second. Mr. Curran, this section.
Okay, so if this is a particular kind of negotiation, or is this just a, it ended up not being as in the last three months?
Not unless, for sure, but perhaps it's like what we can help us with that? Okay, so not unless, as far as I know, not unless possibly, but the architect, um.
I remember that we are in a, um, it's, it's, it's stale. How stale is it?
Okay. You know, I don't know that the, at the time, I had obviously, it wasn't, I didn't even know what was, what was going on in the agenda, but, the assets of the year is no doubt, many of our contracts get rolled over, we don't feel a need to go out for a RFP. It's, you know, usually approved of a lot, hopefully, in July, in the RFP.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Yes, the, the recommendations for the RFP, I have, so the company will be sure, um, what is? RFP general will do this one for us, or be sure.
The RFP itself will be handled by.
The RFP will be able to say, the requests to RFP.
And probably mimic exactly what was put out before, so they have probably over somewhere. The request of the board request, given the order numbers, are concerned about stale contracts.
So I, I understand any of these stale contracts, you said. Um, is there a? So, I, I understand that these stale contracts, these, um, is there urgency as far as the market tax goes? Would be doing this, uh...
The item was on the March fifth agenda that was discussed and activated, so this is a second...
I see, so, but, is it, is it, okay, is there urgency for the market tax?
Does it need to be an emergency that I come up?
I mean, I think there's urgency.
There's, yeah, it's kind of sensitive to have...
Any, uh, any issues or complaints or any, anything with the existing market tax that you know of right now? And again, I'm not implying that you shouldn't put RFP out to, to put it out as a little tomorrow. And typically, these type of things are done on the reorg, so we'll go through, we'll go through these RFPs. But, again, I'm not implying that.
So to clarify, if the org, you're using point consultants, you don't necessarily contract with the method you want? After you already renewed, there's a requirement, it's a reappointment. But the contract is not invalid anytime. It doesn't have to be true.
But are you...
And I haven't completed.
It's a normal understanding.
Not that I know of, nobody quite paid for attention, so I'm hoping I have more.
Um, no, we've worked with Mark Patterson forever, they're actually very, very good, highly recommended in their new funding in districts around the state. Um, also, they, they actually work with us a lot, and we ask them for, you know, information. They'll lead it to us and spend some time, not charge us anything for it, just because they've been working that how they work with the state, so absolutely don't know.
And all existing contractors are open to submit their proposals, and, you know, there's no indication that this is your place, but...
Just because the contracts are, the RFPs are not going to mean that the person contracted under contract is going to be approved, uh, in the court. It's just, it's a question of...
Any further discussion? Okay, all those speakers, this is highest in the eye.
Aye.
All those against? For Dom, any others? Mr. Carr, and Mrs. Rimmer? Two. I have two point oh three, RFP forensic audit, motion?
Aye.
Miss Rimmer? Second?
Seven.
Miss Fancy, discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to bring this resolution. Uh, based on the Board Education hereby directing superintendent of school to cause preparation, issue of request for proposal for a renter's college for district finances and business. I have a thing over here that's on our speaker's tab, which was, you know, the last few months, we've been discussing and voting on special engagement laws. And at the February meetings, there was a discussion, four members, the director, the chairman, all of you, and, uh, president did make clear that we were not, at that time, voting on our laws. So, again, the COVID, the competition, haven't been happening the whole way. I don't think, you know, why all of a sudden we're doing an RFP for a renter's college? Why have we gone away from a special engagement law? And now into a true renter's college?
Okay, so to clarify, it was, um, the way that first RFP was posted online, and it is online, I'm trying to review it, it did not state forensic audit. And it had five percent, I think that was specifically required. And they were stating that it's still online, I mentioned that before. And therefore, I corrected my teleprompters in order to make sure that it was not, not written down. That was posted. Everybody's clear, that that notion passed, an appointment was hopefully going to happen, and the one proposal received was withdrawn by the person elected at that meeting that we said. So that would have required I'd already posted the same thing, which we hadn't posted quite. Or not be posted in the event. So that, that ended there. So seeing to that, I use the request of four members to have an action for every part. So to clarify, also, the member of the public who spoke, this is a new request. That asks, exactly, that asks to, and I'm glad I asked it, and, asks to what was previously required, and I'm going to let my comment, Mr. Rimmer, see that.
I have always wanted to see her in the garden, from before I was president. When you were going up to a board, when, when you were the fellow president of the board, so, that year, one hundred and thirty, you would always, I would always recommend the CPA getting her in the garden. I think it's the most transparent thing that you can do on boards, and that's the simplest part. It's to know that everything is above board, and there's nothing really hidden. I can't imagine why anybody wouldn't want to have a correct order to make sure that everything is above board.
Also, as a board member, we have received complaints from unique members about field usage, entities that were supposed to be charged, reutilizing fields that were not charged to utilize the field for that reason. I'm a member of the PTA at Cheryrane Elementary School, and there was money given to Cheryrane from an assembly member that was reappropriated to cover new projects. And as a result of that, we feel as though it's, it's a good idea to look into those matters. And you should definitely find out the answers as to why those things happen. We do a renter's order, they dig into matters like that. They'll find out why exactly those things happen. And that's the reason why we do it, but it's important to have one of these.
I'm just going to add to my colleague's comments that this is type of audit, should the resolution pass, would include everything that was an original RFP plus more. So it would, it would be necessary now to put another one out. It would be inclusive and in addition. Any further comments? Yeah?
Do we have an external order? We have an external order? And between those four, we still look at theirs? That's not true.
Oh. I'm not assuming anything, but when requested to the internal external auditors, they say that they don't perform a second vote. Even what was posted as the original RFP, for such a lot of vote.
What about the external vote?
Yeah, yeah, we made sure before we posted it the first time.
What I was saying is that the external auditor only does certain things, they don't operate the title for, and while we, the internal auditor, we tell the internal auditor at the beginning of the school year, or three, four, three, what upon that, it's both time. So it's both the internal and external, both not why we serve to things that we want to have done. It gives the taxpayers comfortability. And I'm not directly speaking anything that's horrific, but it does give everybody a feeling of completeness and transparency and all this, and you want to make sure that that's not, the board's here to protect your taxpayers, that's why I'm here, to protect children and the taxpayers. So that's, that's what we want to do, to guide you from the beginning to the end.
And honestly, we received community complaints, definitely, where you are saying, this is wrong, and you would like to look into this. That was hard to do, those people pay taxes the same way, they're going to go and read your report. You know, if people are saying, you would like to be looking into this, and it's not just one person, several people, then you look into it. If it doesn't harm anything, go out and look at something, and boy, it does cost a lot. We, we don't have a bad thing, we are...
They're paying us out, so we're playing together.
We are, it works out, so we might as well. And we'll submit your proposal as a result. We, as a board, decide, is that okay, is that a good decision? Those end looks at it, everyone waves an arm, and we decide who's going to be chosen to take on. So, yes, it doesn't necessarily have to be a role to take on, because it's a professional service. It never does, we do decide in front of us, we don't know what the president means now. We have to find that out.
Saying an RFP out does not, um, also guarantee that there would be a contract. The previous RFP did not come out of the contract. There are always decisions to be made, and production of the administration is a... Any further discussion? The others, none, all those speakers, certified in the eye. All those against? Any opinions?
Could you put the laptop back down?
Yeah!
I have two point zero four. I will put the laptop down when I can, laughing at a single audience, please stop. I have two point zero four. The point may be to cast council, any permission to be up? Miss Rimmer, second? Miss Fancy, any discussion? Any discussion? Nobody? Okay, all those speakers, this is highest in the eye.
Aye.
All those against? Any opinions? I have two. I have two point zero five. Appointment alternate general counsel. Motion? Miss Fancy, second? Mr. Carrance? Discussion?
Um, we did speak briefly about this before, and so, you know, while we were saying what we're trying to accomplish, um, I, I would like to enable this act, and I have a copy of that, to, just so we could maybe develop more of a plan for how we handle situations that they lost, that, that were. Like having a clarity in the, in the appointment. I understand, and it's, it's hard for the little dudes concerning, but we're actually voting on, putting out officially? No, I can, um, if, maybe we should put a little version to lay out some of that.
Um, so my response to that is, it's kind of sensitive, because there could be any... Yeah. And, and we ran into, yeah, so we ran into a situation where we had to hold staff meetings quickly in order to make these appointments specific to actions taken by other parties. And so, vote determines as far as that would provide a possibility to not need a quick meeting and a vote have been done.
And that's, again, uh...
And that would be, that would be tomorrow.
I think we should, but I think some type of language, that it's twice more, communicating with each other is important to have.
Yeah, we've done it very well, actually.
Well, I think that's, to have issue with it, we should have that. So, again, if they can wait another eight days, because we have another meeting next Tuesday, and we may have another stuff to do this week, or next Monday, so...
The language was drafted by the chairman, but current agents were drafted by him, not by the chairman. Any further discussion?
Also, the, uh, there is something unbelievable mentioned within the next eight days. There, this is one of our candidates, who's already indicated that these nine comfortable certain situations may have had a problem. That's the reason why this has to happen yet, and we've already discussed this.
Mr. Carrance, any? All those speakers, this is highest in the eye.
Aye.
All those against? Please hold. Okay, we have to get this right. Nay, since you don't, Mr. Rimmer, correct? Exceed, since you're... For the latest comments, on the second of the agenda, I just started today for the first time. This is an outcome of policy update. In all right, everybody? Amy, please hold on. This is, uh, according to an update that's placed on March fifth, on policy number twenty-three fifty, adding more members comments. When some allegations, just like what we did to the public, for better comments, are limited to three minutes, so it's scalable timing. And can reference either a particular member of the staff or individual students. And we can go in one order, and then next time, go in reverse order, or whatever, but... Mr. Carrance, you show that, it's scalable timing.
Seems that some people in the audience and the community haven't yet realized that the election is over. But we repeat, that it is over. To paraphrase prophet Isaiah, it's time to be swords into cloud shares and spheres into kingdom. And then to cave it over to the years, and someone who has always believed in this ability, I'm shocked and dismayed to see professional people coming to the podium constantly attacking the board, and particularly making derogatory and personal attacks upon present schoolwork without validation or fact. Some teachers have also made remarks that the current board is not following policy and procedures, and questioning the legality of our decisions. However, everyone should be aware that the superintendent schoolwork has a board attorney who sits with us at executive board meetings and gives his professional advice regarding our discussion in developing procedural policy and legal questions. If this board are not operating the best interest of the school district, the school attorney has a legal obligation to make us aware and guide us to the correct decision. Just because we page through something specifically from a previous board, it doesn't mean that they are incorrect or unfair. I'm shocked and sad to discuss the wrongful conduct of a district head of club to total employee. None of us on this board want to be here at this juncture of words in life.
...to 20 years of evidence and it is sufficient to strong enough to warrant the litigation, a suspension of court, followed by a hearing of lawyers outside the district to determine the builder's innocence to the charges. I would invite all those people who came to the podium tonight, the audience and the entire community, to please return to the board meeting after the hearing has taken place and you now acknowledge their decision and then come back and look every single board that was in the eye and ask them why they voted to suspend or not suspend the employee as soon as smoke was detected. The truth and facts will set all of us free. There is an interest of a community member to allow a legal dispute.
Mr. Garrett, how are you doing? Three minutes. You may leave.
I'm good.
Thank you. He's gone.
I got texts saying this is closer than this. Closer. I want to thank the United States, which is a number of our students. There's two words that always come into my mind when I think of Suffolk Center, which I was lucky enough to put on the year at four years ago, and two words are not be proud. I want all of you to realize how proud as a board we are of all of your accomplishments. And you don't have to be a winner to be considered a winner. You compete. Not everyone competes. Some people, for whatever reason, don't. Whatever team you're on, whatever robotics team, whatever athletic team, whether you're in Devon, it doesn't matter. What track team you're on, baseball, soccer, or cross, maybe you played lacrosse here before. I just want to mention that. Just know the fact that you're out there and that you can make your world, that's what I'm proud of. And I want to congratulate all the students of all their accomplishments since the past of 2019, who is behind and about, let's say this is March, April, May, or so this is about three months and about 10 days, I wish you a very happy new year. I just want to thank all of you again tonight. We have to show that we do want to support our members and I hope you continue to come to the meetings and we will be glad for it.
I would just like to stick a little bit to the special meetings that people are commenting on and quite honestly that I'm sad to comment. We had a lot of discussions because of the fact that we can't as a board see if we get things that need to be discussed amongst us on the agenda. The agenda was posted by the administration, the previous superintendent went ahead and he said to us, this is my agenda, I'm the one that controls it. We cannot get anything out of the meeting and this is the reason why we have to have that meeting and discuss. I said some months ago to Mr. Kennedy when we came up to the mic and spoke that I thought this was helpful. And the reason why I said it's helpful is look around you. Now all of a sudden, people are coming to meetings. Kids are here from the schools, staff members are here, family members are here. People are telling us that kids in the schools are here. And if anything's right, you would have this sub team in the front, Pro Shang, whatever she does, I don't know what she does, she's sorry with Dan or whatever she does. Though she was one of the few people that was there, she's been right where she is, you find her out. Now everybody's here to listen and thank that team for what's going on. And that's important. This is your community, your schools. You should take and guard against and make sure that puts those on the line. I love the way you've come to the meeting. Thank you.
I just want to say that we were presented with information in executive session that's not available to the public. There's only one individual that can share that information with you. We cannot. I wish you could, but we can't. I just want to say that I heard some things and I don't know if you guys have ever heard the saying, see something, say something, but there are people who are working in the school districts, parents or students, who have seen something, who's been saying something. And I think that is part of the problem. I want to see a very open communication. If you think that there's something that the board should know or that the administration should know, then you should send us something. Send us an email, let us know what's going on. We don't know. There are certain things that we weren't told. I can never follow the crowd or done what is popular. I do what I feel is right and I think I've proven that over the years. I can tell you that if I feel a certain way, no matter where I am, I stick to my convictions. And I always will. Lastly, I'm an elected official and I was instructed by the voters of this district to protect the children and the taxpayers and that is exactly what I am doing.
I just want to address quickly the statement that I gave earlier and my desire for, I can't say it. My desire for the public to know what happened and a statement is deserved by everybody in this room to the best of our ability to give it to you. And like many others up here have said, there's a lot of information that simply cannot be shared because it's confidential or it's executive. I believe that the statement that we gave was the wrong statement to give. I think that it could have been done in a more, I mean prepare my statements because I didn't know what this was going to say when I got here. So I didn't want to call it a statement. So anyway, I just wanted to clear that while everybody deserves to know everything they possess again, I certainly was not in favor of the board being this statement that would break the night. That's all.
Thank you. As a courtesy, I just want to say from the end that I will feed back on your positive notes and the doctor's help. I'd like to congratulate all of the fees that we recognize today and those who didn't come.
Boy, they've been working all year very hard, including giving up their free time in their summers, representing Suffolk Central School District to the best of your ability. We're all very proud of you, extremely proud of you. But as a Ponki, I want to give a special shout out to the Suffolk Ponki team. Very proud of your performance throughout the season and to the point that we reached winning the semifinal, coming back from the dusty goals, I know how difficult that was, and winning A-3. So very proud of you and it took my son's team three attempts in a row to win this season, which has been 2012, and I believe and I know that you can. So go Suffolk, go Ponki.
Public participation on the island of islands, the same votes we ran before, five, three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the board president, choose, state your name, excuse me, state your name, your street address, and your probation position. Thank you.
My name is Paul, I have two children, come through the district, I live in Suffolk. I have watched with dismay the last eight months as this new Board of Education is creating utter turmoil in the Suffolk Central School District. Though campaigning on a promise of kids first, newly elected members of the Board of Education along with the current board president clearly have another agenda, one more more petty, personal, and worse to struggle. Let's consider and take off some of your accomplishments of the last eight months. You deepened the rift among the Board of Education as evidenced by the steady, public, regular four-three votes against this business. You hollowed out offices at Hillburn, including the latest regulations of a very highly qualified business administrator on the eve of the budget. You've created such conflict in the district that it results in both the board president and Board of Education being served by superintendent with commissioners complaints. Then the sudden suspension of the superintendent that has all the appearances of retaliation. A Board of Education so incapable of working with superintendent that insists on wasting taxpayer dollars by unnecessarily violating labor lawyer negotiations to undermine superintendent despite the fact that Board previously used a labor lawyer in that very purpose and produced no results. And now tonight, we listen to you hire itself two more lawyers on taxpayer, on the taxpayer side. The steady flow of special meetings will rule the public. Board agendas, board agendas posted in the last minute, including this and one for the season. If this is putting kids first, that means you're putting kids last in the flight. Make no mistake, I've got plenty of issues over the years with lack of grandparents in the school district and surely there are areas that need to be addressed. And using the public trust as board members to sell personal grievances and pay slights is no way to achieve that. And if the kids first ticket intended to hollow out the district offices, then it should have been part of the campaign last month. But of course it wasn't. And if it was, I suspect we can let the results of it go quite different. Suffolk School District has much to be proud of. We are blessed with wonderful teaching staff, good students, and our last year. All we ask of our Board of Education is that they manage to keep the ship sailing straight. This Board of Education is reckless and its leadership is without moral compass. And though you might not know the outcome of the residents at the moment, rest assured
Joaquin Johnson, Aston Road, Spotsboro, New York. I don't normally speak at these things, however, the comments by a board member here just drove me to respond. As someone that was elected to a board, though an election may have concluded, you are still a public servant. So that means you need to listen to the public, not chastise them, but hear their voices Those comments offended the unlawful weapons, alright, and I hope they take that into consideration. As far as the board as a whole, I do think it's very important that you recognize the importance of your fiscal responsibilities as well. And to spend money on audits and attorneys, that's, those are dollars that go directly away from students. And to stay here and say that unequivocally you're for the students, I find to be very surprising. Because nothing was mentioned of the students. There's not a single action item relating to curricular matters. And I will just conclude by telling certain board members that you should be careful because I do believe that the quoting of scripture at a public meeting may be considered an endorsement of religion.
This is the second time I'm speaking at this meeting. The first time on record I said I was the most embarrassed I'd ever been to be a member of this community and I stand corrected. It is today. Currently, the New York State Controller is conducting an audit of all district finances at no cost to our district. Do you as a board not trust that the Controller will do a satisfactory audit? Why are we spending taxpayer money on something the state is already doing? My husband is a certified public accountant for over 20 years. He's worked for big four firms and smaller firms. He has been an auditor. He has told me that a forensic audit is not typically a general audit. It is looking for specific fraud and that any CPA would know that a regular audit tests everything and can find a specific issue and then it would need to be tested in more detail. I am not understanding why we just voted on this. Furthermore, I've been at almost every meeting. The RFP was for an audit, never for a forensic audit. If I am wrong, correct me, this is the first time I saw the words forensic audit being used in writing. It had been spoken several times. I myself personally asked why it had been called a forensic audit and we were assured it was not, which you explained tonight that wasn't, but yet tonight we voted on something for the first time we've seen on the agenda. Usually it's the second reading when it's voted on. I agree the election is over. I am also shocked and saddened by the behavior, not of our community, but of our board. Tonight saying that where there is smoke is fire is 100% correct. You ask us to put forth in the process and of the board, an elected official needs to be held to a higher standard than just a regular community member. You have to have thicker skin. Unfortunately, that's the nature of the job you decided to run for as an elected. Tonight, calling out teachers and staff in public, saying who has attended meetings? I thought we weren't supposed to discuss personnel in public. Then being reprimanded by a board member as to why their opinions and decisions should be agreed with. The same board member who on social media called the community member a caboose, which looking it up means an ass. Unfortunately, there is smoke and there is probably fire. We are putting faith, hoping that the three out of the four vet board members who have been repeatedly working and showing that they are in the best interest of our community, unfortunately, three out of four isn't going to do it. Who is left running our district right now? Our superintendent is gone. Our lawyer, apparently gone. Our HR person, gone. Our accountant, business budgeting guy, gone. Who's left running our board?
Hello, board. My name is Connor Martin. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. I'm very proud of all the sophomores up in high school. I just wanted to come up here and speak on a topic that everyone is here for Dr. Adams. He was up with us in Buffalo this weekend and he supported us all the way. He was at Peru Surfing the Regional Game. He was in the locker room every time we won, every time we lost. He really held our backs and he was there for us all the way and I just want everyone
Like Yona just said, Dr. Adams is just completely for the kids. You can't hear of another suspended superintendent that drives six hours to Buffalo to cheer
Hello, my name is Teresa Davis. I'm a mother of children and grandchildren that have been to the district. I personally know Dr. Adams. I know him as a moral patriot, a citizen. For you people to, whoever's involved here, for you to do what you did to him, you know, without us knowing anything, it's appalling. You can see the people, you can see the kids, how much they love him. These are signs. Right, guys? Not right what you're doing and elections will prove that.
I'm Vanessa Larian, I have two children in Suffolk School District. I have two questions. One is for how many UCTs that came out tonight to support Dr. Adams, also came out to support Dr. Biggs.
Address the board.
I know it's the goal of this board not to answer questions, but I also just wondered, Mr. Kern, you yourself and other board members have been asking for a long time for certain documentation. Mr. Kern, you asked several times for a five-year project proposal. I'm wondering if, did we ever see that?
I don't have a business on this, but I made that, I had that quite, we were giving information last year, which led me to go and watch a video of Stephen I said it wasn't adequate. So we're going to see what happens with this, but unfortunately, we're going to be short staff, so hopefully we can get the information we need.
When we were in full staff, did you get the permission info?
Hello, my name is Sam Eisberg. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. Last year, I remember going door to door in Bonner Air campaigning for three candidates for the election last year and you ran on the ticket saying that you were here to support the kids. And I petitioned for you to get on the board so I could have my cross-country coach back for my last season in Suffolk. But you guys, I know you guys tried for that, but you're running on the same ticket here, saying that you're for the kids, but it doesn't show that you are.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Davis, my name is fourth day. I just want to say, me and my old wife both back then, what did you want that way? Before I scored you, you threw me in the double ball.
Any further comments?
I would like to address a little thing about that, I was like, it's kind of messed up, like, I think it took him off the board, but like, a mistake that was made, that he made, and I just feel like that's not right because like, we all have these, we all have these things and that's just how it is. Secondly, I would just like to say like, that's kind of rude of you to like, come at us like that, that's just not right to like, come at like the people that you serve and that's just like, oh wait, you're something kind of awful, so.
Name is Jonathan Kirk, up in New York. I just wanted to know, he said he was 17 years old when he carried additions with two other teammates. Was there an adult with him when he was there? Carried additions with three people without an adult? Does it need an adult to carry?
Do you know that from the fact? We can just say.
He said he was seven, he and two teammates.
Me too.
Alright, I just wanted to know, you guys, considering you said you look into community manners, maybe you guys should look into that.
Any further comments? Seeing that I'm happy with your speech for the meeting. Can I ask a question? Can I just give you the board after because you were in the election?
What was your question?
I'm going to ask, how do you like speaking to the board of the meeting?
Uh, thank you. Last year when I was campaigning for like the three candidates, I was walking around Bonner Air with your pamphlets or whatever, just putting them on people's doorsteps without
Okay, I'm going to leave for the next section and we will move on to closing comments. I'm back in to the panel, Dr. DeSantis.
Good evening again. I'm amazed, absolutely amazed and proud of every single person I met up and spoke. It's the backbone of our society that we have civil discourse that will speed our mind and that we flet our feelings beyond all other things. I'm proud of every student that I met and spoke. And we'll, I think, that we will show up at the next meeting again to let us know your names. At this time, I'd like to take a note from the chair. I'm doing a second. I can see all the leaders in the class and I, I'm going to ask, I'm going to take this back.
Yeah, pretty good, huh?
That was amazing. I know I missed a few good ones, but that was fucking fantastic.